See the little 5:30 on the computer here, so there's no clock in this room, so I...
Not yet.
Duly noted, Mr. Depp. All right, if you'd all please rise and join me in saluting the flag. Begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all bow your heads, thank you Father for this meeting this evening. Please ensure that we make the best decisions for all involved and that our business is conducted in a fair and reasonable manner. And thank you for our visitors and make sure everybody gets home safe. And thank you for letting me go on vacation after this meeting. Keep me with you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Director Arden Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Ewing.
Here.
Vice President James Herman.
Present.
President Michael Shaffer.
Here. Secretary Shaffer is accused at... She's in Sacramento, correct?
Yes.
Scott, any ceremonial matters? Late communications? All right, then we'll go to public comments. This isn't time for anyone in the audience wishing to speak on matters that are not agendized. Anyone wishing to speak in our public comments? No one rushing forward, then we'll move right to the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one not present. Well, Scott, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have a request to move item D3 for the first discussion tonight. That's okay with the board?
Okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay. D3 it is.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. Board's proposal, a license agreement with a site license here with the Orange County Sand District. They have, they own and operate the Baker May Interceptor in Coast Mesa. And they've been treating that line with odor and corrosion by adding chemicals in the line. In the past, they've been using Urbain McFarlane's facilities to accomplish that and that objective. Urbain McFarlane's has taken some improvements to the infrastructure and OCSD can no longer use the chemicals in the facility, so they are recommending or suggesting that they do an EDOs account station. You might recall, they had used that station in the past for a drainage station to emit chemicals into the line to control odors. We do get a considerable amount of, or not so, we do get complaints of odors in that area. Either it's sometimes my D R line or could be the Baker May Interceptor. The proposal is to install a 184 gallon chemical tank. It's a simple thing to think about. You know, if you could pull up all the attachments on there. Especially if I'm a little less creative, it's a little less...
I move approval.
Second.
Does the board want more than schedule, or are you...
Do we have to get...
For public information?
Well, do we have to get any other approval from any agencies?
OCSD will go through all approval procedures. There's, you know, they have to go through their EIC, mark them with you, notify the public, because they're, they will be transporting store chemicals. So, all those notifications will be done through OCSD.
Do, one other question, do we have to notify the residents at all of any changes?
OCSD would be that, yeah, that's their responsibility. So, just want to also point out, so the tank is an 840 gallon tank. It's a civil size tank. As you know, there is already existing gates at the Doza with another chain fence gate around the tank. There will also be a secondary containment facility. There's leaks, they'll capture the chemicals. It also will have a line system, so if there is a leak, you'll notify our staff to respond, to respond to the leak. The issue with us is that, because the site in the tank is a civil size, we'd have to relocate our equipment. We have some equipment stored here right now. We have two bypass pumps, an arrow board, some scrap metal, some mammal covers. We have to relocate the equipment. Board, we found a location, the Orange Coast College Boatyard. In fact, it was going down forever from there. Right there, right off of Adams. It's very centralized located, it's, you know, 24/7 access. OCSD is willing to rent us space there. The annual cost of the whole office is $20,000.
That is not budgeted, so we're able to negotiate with OCSD to pay us upfront, the total amount, on a yearly basis. And so, that money, and then we will have the funds to rent that space. Also, if there's any rate increases by OCC, OCSD agrees to pay up to 10% difference. If by chance OCC decides they don't want to rent that space to us, then we'd have to come to eventually agree upon with OCC applying an other location for storing equipment. If we can't find that location, then this agreement will cease and they would have to remove that tank from the property. So, I do believe this is a win-win situation for both agencies. One, we get to control the odors issues, again, as I said, we got complaints. It helps OCSD with their odor program with the interceptor. Plus, we still have an alternative site for our storage and our equipment, so it works out for everyone.
I didn't know they had a boatyard there, right? I mean, I went to school there, I thought the boats were all down by the water.
Yeah, it's like their, I think that's like their yard where they fix the boats. If you scroll down a little bit, we'll have some pictures of the yard. That's what they're kind of, they're storing there right now.
Oh, their crew, their crew boats. I think that's my old apartment at Harvard Greens right back there.
Yeah, that's, that is.
That's where the cows used to be.
Yeah.
Rob?
We've reviewed the plans that OCSD provided. You have Brian Reed over there, you have Mark Esker, two fine engineers from OCSD. So, everything's in order as you would expect, so this is, that's Scott's official...
Guys did know your accolades by coming to our meeting, Jim?
We appreciate it.
Scott, is this in the area that we were talking to the city about putting new fencing around?
Yeah, I don't know what happened. No, I have no idea, no idea what happened.
Keep your fruition?
I don't even think the person that we were dealing with doesn't even work there anymore. So, I think it just kind of fell off.
Because this would be a good time to do it, if we were ready to do it.
Sure, yeah.
We are going to do this, as far as the Doza project, we're going to do, we're going to the city, I think, to do a new fence.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's going to be all fenced, as part of this process.
What kind of fencing?
It was, it was going to be the exact same fence, but it's going to be higher. So, it's going to be based on City Code, so I think the building we have now...
It's a chicken fence.
Yeah, the chicken fence with the green, screening, private screen. So, we're going to, we talked to the city and they okayed us, so we're going to submit those plans as part of this. We appreciate that.
So, two questions. One, is this going to be a permanent site for us for a long time?
Yes, it is a permanent site, but there are, there are...
And they're not going to go back to Urbain Ranch and do the same thing?
No, it's going to be a permanent site, but if we need to make a contract, we can.
Okay. And the second thing is, did you ever look at the city yard to store our extra things as a possibility instead of paying 12,000 bucks a year?
Well, it's not, it's not going to come in our policy, it's easy to be paid for that. So, no, I did not look at, look at the other options at the yard, did not.
I'm not sure. Yeah, they're getting pretty tight over there right now.
Okay, I'm just curious, you know?
We did look a little bit and ended that after they were tight on space.
Okay. That was my two questions.
All right, we have a motion by Director Uten and a second by Vice President Fair...
Vice President.
Did I say Vice President? I'll move you up if you want. Call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. D1 then?
That's a win-win for us, too.
That's good, yeah.
I'm going to give you one. Okay. So, 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 Phil, answer any questions?
Any questions on the strategic plan update?
No.
Are we on that?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll receive the file. Approved General Manager's 2017 Performance Goals.
Thank you, Mr. President. The board proposed performance goals for 2017. Happy for you to answer any questions, open for discussion, add, delete any goals. Might not think after yesterday's meeting, or discussion, probably adding another goal kind of up in there for with the CRNR, but it's open for discussion.
Yeah, I would like you to add number 11, some kind of goal to do the process of negotiation with CRNR. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds good.
And/or maybe expand it a little, you know, to kind of make a, maybe a more overarching goal of, you know, the strategic planning for the various elements in the trash con... The trash, the trash area.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to word that, but, you know, lots of elements, lots of things, opportunities and balls up in the air and...
I have a question, a comment, and number one, that's the Conduct the Emergency Operations Center. Are you going to involve other agencies when you do that, or just us?
No, it's just us.
Just us?
Yeah, yeah. Most of the staff is not fully familiarized or trained on the operations of EOC sessions, so I like to, I'm waiting, you know, we're, they're possibly entering two positions right now, so I'll get them on board, once they're on board, then we'll start doing the training.
Would you include the lady that gave us the presentation out in El Toro? I mean, or not?
Kelly?
Yeah, would you include her as a...
Yeah, yeah, I could, yeah.
This is a thought.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, she does that stuff, sure.
This is a thought.
Maybe, maybe a separate approach would be for staff, you know, to go to some of the We Rock exercises.
Oh, and we do that now.
Well, yeah.
Question?
No.
Is part of that We Rock, I think I went a couple of years ago out there to the middle of nowhere to the...
We went to their South EOC down in Molten Lake Gell.
We, we went to the one that's out, like, or I did, the county one out.
Oh, by East, East Orange?
Wherever, I don't know. Wherever I was, up the, up the 241 freeway, you have to secret code to get in.
Yeah, I've been to that one also, I think Jim and I went.
Did you go as quickly?
Yeah, that was a number of years ago, though.
Well, my understanding was that all elected officials in Orange County have to participate in that exercise or that. So, could you guys check on that to see if there's anything that we need to do to make sure we're in compliance with that?
I, I know the board wants, Kelly led the training or overview of their EOC down in South Orange County. They have one that's also in Orange as well, near the county's EOC, but that was under construction, on these renovations. So, I know we've been down there before, and she's been in overview of how that operates. That's the last time the board will, you see that I can remember.
Okay. Well, you know, I was the only one from our board that went to whichever one I went to, so, okay. And I know ISDoc has got some plans to incorporate some We Rock train, because Kelly comes to our ISDoc meetings pretty frequently, and so I know there's planning on something.
Yes.
Okay. Then...
Move approval?
Move approval of the goals. You have a motion of second, any other discussion on the goals? Call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Okay.
I got a follow-up question to that now. Are you going to be meeting with Scott after this?
I think we're meeting tonight, right?
Are you guys meeting tonight?
We're going to close session?
No, no.
No, we're going to meet in a closed session to evaluate if you're in favor tonight.
Okay, okay.
And then you and I will meet after that?
Sure.
Tonight, or can we do it later?
Yeah, later, whatever you want.
You and I, is that okay? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just stopped checking to make sure that was the plan.
We want to make sure he's toeing the line and doing everything.
No, he's above, above that line.
Toes above the line?
Very good.
Okay, let's move to item D4 then.
Thank you, Mr. President. Diana Marzuski will give you the report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. President's report. After February 14th study session...
Is that, is that thing on, Diana?
It is.
Okay. You just have such a soft voice.
At the February 14th study session, staff proposed converting the maintenance assistant position from part-time to full-time. This position would then become eligible for benefits. You can see in the staff report is a table, it's broken down of the cost for the full-time benefits. There are sufficient funds available in the budget to cover additional salary benefits, and staff is recommending that the board approve reclassifying the part-time maintenance assistant position to a full-time position.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I, just a quick question, I don't even know if we brought this up at the study session, but we're not posting this, we're just elevating...
Yes.
And he's agreed, obviously, to that.
Yes, he is open to it.
Why would you not?
Yes.
I, I just, I don't know if we had talked about that at the study session, but...
I think, I think somebody did ask, yes, and he has been, I have talked to him about it, and he is open to that, yes. He would welcome that.
All right, I'll call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Engineers' Report.
Thank you, Robert, President and Board Member. Item 1 is the project edit report for Apple Movement Project. If you haven't answered any questions, as you know, we're quite busy and soon to complete questions brought to the floor.
A question for you, Rob. They were on my street replacing two mammal covers? Is that not us, or was that OCSD?
That is us. We have a mammal surface repair program where mammals, we had to fix the grade 5s in two phases, that's a world-determined study, and that's the grade 4s and grade 5s. So, we are ready for adjusting those to grade as necessary to keep the safety.
Did the recent storms give us any other problems, you know?
They, that's a big situation. The water gets, a crack occurs in the asphalt, water gets in there, and that's when the trouble starts. It turns into a little problem, so, and it's very sensitive around mammal covers, because it's only mentioned in a set of asphalt, above the concrete cover, and that was a complication.
Okay, good. Any questions for Rob?
That's good.
I have two.
Thank you. This is a very small project, 365 Estes Street. The architect has worked with me in the past and planned to ensure that I designed the sewer line from the front of the house to the back of the house. So, I accepted the project, and so it will go through our outside consultant with our concrete dimension, so we can hereby...
Okay, questions for Rob on item 2?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item 3, we have bid opening for our 19th Street pump station. When we started the project, we were going to abandon the, abandon the pump station, but just move the generator there. Halfway through the design phase, OCSD pulled out the, abandoned it. So, we added a bunch of work that needs to be done at the pump station, mainly the base with new fence, paving, lights, electrical work, et cetera. And therefore, we need a bunch of friends for as part, as part of the bid opening. So, we have a very good contractor. That, this contractor was the one who installed the generator at the yard, so he's familiar with us from California Building and Evaluation. So, staff recommended items 1, 2, 3, standard procedure for bid opening, along with the plant for...
That's at the end of 19th Street, right, Rob?
Yeah, on the south side of 19th Street at the end. We did learn that the city will be, as part of their bicycle trail improvements, to go across all the park, will be abandoning all that asphalt out there that's at the end of 19th Street. They're going to have a driveway for us, a driveway to get into the park there, but down the road it will be a lot different.
Does that affect Banny Ranch property, though?
No, what affects Banny Ranch will be the bicycle trail that will go across. And if we were to have built a sewer line, it would work perfectly with a bicycle trail.
Is the generator in an enclosure, Rob?
No. The gen, we, we're going to put an 8-foot-high fence around the entire pump station. Right now, there's 6-foot-high chain links. We're going to put an 8-foot-high wire, and generator will be exposed. We don't seem to have trouble with exposed generators, and we checked with IRSWBD, and they do as well. So, we have our handy generator that's exposed, and a lot of buildings just put their generator on the side of the building, they have it exposed. So, it has doors and all, as per usual. They don't need secondary...
There's no wires?
No, everything's underground.
Okay.
Do we have, this is an action item, or...
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
We can do all three in one motion right now? Okay. All right, then a motion to move forward with the recommended action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
We'll review it before and after, if you're ready.
When do you expect that to be completed?
Probably two months from now. Contractor's ready to go.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Treasures' Report. Hi. Mark? That was uncalled for, I shouldn't have. Go ahead. Any questions? Off easy tonight. Get the sense that we're trying to get through this meeting.
I've never seen you move so fast.
Me? Watch me.
Well, I looked over and I thought Warner was in that chair.
Could be. All right. Cal, sir, anything to report this evening, sir?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President. We do have our trial on March 13th, but we can do everything. You need to know about that, and I'll have more to say when we see what the judge has to say.
How long do you think that would take? Would it just do it in one day?
Yes, it would.
Will they have a decision after, in that same day or not?
You could have a tentative before we arrive, or take it under submission, and you may find out later. Generally, they have 90 days to issue a rule, and any combination or anything between those two ranges for that. It's always nice to get a tentative ahead of time, especially if it's in your favor, but you don't know if they do that.
Always in your favor.
The court will rate it if you read it the day before.
And then you'll join us in closed session later this evening?
Sure.
All right. Local meetings.
Orange County Sand District. That, was it last night? Yeah. And the big thing there is Caltrans is going to be changing the entrance to the facility there. Yeah, it's, it's hard to describe, I can't really do an adequate...
Flyover lane.
Yeah, it's a flyover lane, and it, you know, we move our entrance down about, I don't know, a couple blocks.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, and then we're in the process of knocking down the administration building and build, building a new one, probably on property we just acquired across the street. And we've also identified other properties across the street near the one we have in Escrow, or actually, we closed Escrow on it. And we'll develop those, those properties into, you know, whatever we need them for. And, and, you know, but, but we're so tight over there, if you, if you, you have to knock something down to build something, and it's really, it's really a challenge, so. But we also, as I said, have identified other properties that we're making a run at, and we're pretty close on, on, on some other, like, three or four properties, and I, I, well, I won't, I, I can't tell you anything beyond that, but one of the properties that we, the property we did buy was that Hobby Building, you know, that says Hobby on it there.
The radio-controlled car place?
Yeah, it's a pretty big place.
Oh, yeah.
What are you going to put in there?
No.
Radio-controlled building, I think.
Really?
Are you guys going to have access, like, across, like, going to put a bridge or tunnel or anything? I mean, there's, otherwise you're crossing the street to go back.
I don't know, you know, we've been kind of working on the Fountain Valley guys. But, and they're pretty receptive, you know, they're good to work with, but...
Well, that, the flyover lane may be, may be in the way.
Yeah, incorporate, yeah, into that, but that configuration has changed, what, two or three times to what it is now, so it could change again, you know? But every time they do, it's, although, Caltrans is going to compensate us for some of that offset.
Where would they put the entrance? Because it's right now...
If it'd be, is that south?
Yeah.
Southwest? Towards Huntington Beach.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, away from the freeway.
But not quite to Ward Street?
The current one will be, will go away.
Okay.
And then it'll go back down...
Towards Ward Street?
Yeah, towards Ward.
Yeah, towards Ward, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be right off the, you know, the, the east side of the building.
You know, if they put it down that far, because, you know, they got that guard that sits there up above, and there's not that much room as you enter to get to the existing headquarters.
It's all going to be...
It's all going to be...
Yeah, and it's going to take a while, and, and that's not the only thing. They've got the other plans on...
I think they're going to build a laboratory along with it.
Yeah, laboratory, yeah.
A new laboratory. There's many old buildings and, you know, they're, it's like a spider web for trying to correspond with staff.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, that'll be interesting.
Is, are they using the funding that they might have used for our pump station amendment? I mean, this isn't a, this isn't a cheap deal, is it?
I think that'll, I think that'll just, I think that'll just build the entranceway.
We're talking, we're talking...
Taj Mahal.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, anyway, that's the most significant thing.
I don't like the looks of those notes. Anything else? Did you have anything to add to OCSD?
Well, I went, I went to the operations committee meeting, and it was a lot of routine projects, but they have a huge project going on with safety, safety upgrades. And they also have a, something that we had done back in the 80s. There, along with LA County Sand District, I believe, Hyperion, maybe RWD, going to have a food process receiving project. So, they'll, they'll coordinate with those so that we're not all vying for the same orange juice, but, and they, and they had the largest storm ever. It was 568 million gallons and...
Most we ever had.
Yeah, and so, when I was there, we had a 550 MDD storm, and we got it out through the system and opened, opened up part of the outfall. But GWS was there, you know, so this was just kind of limping along. So, it was 100 MDD or more went to GWS, so they weren't, they weren't even breathing hard, they, they just were a little excited. Then I went to Waco, and Eric Saperstein, several of us went, and Eric Saperstein provided an update on federal legislation called WIN, which is Water Infrastructure Improvements for the Nation. And there's, what, 100 projects are, or there's, there's 100 projects?
We're number 50, aren't we, on the D-SAL, you mean?
Well, the D-SAL's a high, a higher project than that, but there are many projects that potentially could affect Orange County and California. There's flood control projects, water storage projects, groundwater projects, D-SAL projects, recycling projects, that's probably the Orange County... Um, there's flood control projects, water storage projects, um, groundwater projects, D S A projects, recycling projects. That's probably the Orange County one. Um, then they, they, well, there was a, when, Jim, you went, they, they, um, the admin committee had an, they, they have a long, long, long laundry list of sole source projects, so they, they, they continue to expand that and that's where staff doesn't have to go out and get competitive bids. That's it.
The amount for that water D S A, they have like thirty million dollars if they could get. It's very significant, you know? I think people are pushing the D S A. Fill all the.
Right here. I was gonna say, well, D S A was hot until last week.
The feeling is, uh, from SARPA and, uh, the, the other, uh, entities is that this administration is really more oriented to, uh.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yeah.
And that it's gonna help us and it's gonna help the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, they're gonna be, they're gonna be moving some of their work back to, what, Alabama or someplace? Yeah, I mean, cause we have so much that, that in order to speed it up, we've gotta move it out of state.
Oh, you mean, uh, the, yeah, um, they'll, they'll, they'll consult with a lot of the other offices in order to get the work done.
Yeah.
Quickly.
What happened?
Art, SARPA?
No, no meeting tonight. They do it quarterly, so, next month.
Um, ISDOC, um, really not too much to report other than, uh, there was some discussion on the LAFCO changes and I, I think I'd let you guys know that, uh, we've had a comment that one of the LAFCO commissioners who's on, who reports at ISDOC has thought that they would just push it down the road, the changes, and then the next day they went ahead and adopted the changes, so he was obviously wrong. Uh, the other thing that we talked about, there's some concern about ISDOC's status as a nonprofit or as a, it, you know, its entity, what it, what it is. So, President Fissler, uh, formed an ad hoc committee of myself, he and Leslie Keane to look at what our tax, whether we need to, what we need to file, whether we need to be with the Attorney General, you know, the corporations or, so we're, we're looking into some kind of establishment. Other issues regarding liability insurance and directors and officers and all the things that, that we need to look at, that was, that's gonna be interesting. So, um, Secretary Schaefer's not here, so we don't have a C S D A report. Uh, S D R M A, we had our board meeting earlier this month and, uh, several topics we brought, we talked a lot about the claims safety day, which we've already talked about, but the big, the big item on our agenda was rates. And I think you guys know that there is no increase in the workers' comp rate, but there'll be about a ten percent increase in our property rate. So, the fact that we, we probably have a bigger, bigger bill now that we have this, so, um, you'll see about a ten percent. But we did, uh, we did approve the, um, I just lost the title of it, but where we give you money, where we give money back.
Reimbursement?
No, it's not rebate. You know what I'm talking about, the.
Credits.
Well, we, we call it a dividend in my company, but it's not a, it's a participation.
Incentive?
The credited incentive.
And it, I think it's our credited incentive program, so that will continue and that's not a giant amount. Uh, we did talk about also C I P credits and I, I think we probably get quite a few C I P credits cause a lot of us participate in S D R, S D R M A programs, so. Um, I will be back up there in March for our annual board meeting and safety claims day, but that's about it. Um, other meetings, um, I will report that I, along with, uh, Vice President Ferryman, attended the O C O G meeting today. I am the alternate representative for ISDOC on O C O G and, uh, it's too, too cold to play golf this morning, so I decided to go to O C O G. I wish I'd have played golf now.
Like wading through mud.
You know, Jim and I talked a little bit, those are interesting meetings from the standpoint that there is really, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of elected people in that room and there's a lot of, I guess I would say testosterone, but that's not the right word to say. There's a lot of ego in that room. It's pretty obvious when, when they all start talking, but, um, really, I, I didn't get a whole lot out of today, Jim, unless you.
I, I never do, I mean.
The big topic was, uh, the chairman who was on the city council in, in Anaheim, Chris Murray, uh, asked the O C O G board if they wanted to look at the ramifications of cities losing federal funding if they become sanctuary cities. And of course, Santa Ana's interested in it. Anaheim, Anaheim is apparently looking at becoming sanctuary, sanctuary city.
Those are the only two cities.
I didn't, the guy from Laguna Niguel, did he say they were looking at it?
I didn't hear that, but maybe.
I'm not sure why Laguna Niguel would be a sanctuary city, but.
I didn't think so.
You know, they're, they're, oh, Garden, apparently Garden Grove is a sanctuary city, but they don't call it a sanctuary city. She said they had another term for it, so. Uh, the other big thing out of O C O G is the O C O G General Summit, which Malani has already notified all of us about, March sixteenth, I believe.
Disneyland Hotel?
Yeah, at the Disneyland Hotel, so.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday, I think. I'm not sure.
It better not be a Thursday.
No, no, maybe not.
I know, I think it is a Thursday, if I'm honest with you. Clerk is checking. Thursday? Wondering. Um, one other meeting, and this has nothing for, for our district, but I attended the Public Agency Risk Management Association Annual Conference last week at the Disneyland Hotel and the keynote speaker on Monday was the, the lady who, for the last thirty-something years, has been the risk manager for the Disneyland Resort. I mean, her whole, that's her thing, is risk management. And she talked about safety measures and, and different things that they do at Disneyland. Um, she, so, she brought up, did you know that selfie sticks are not allowed at Disneyland? Do you know why?
People run into it.
Nothing to do with it.
Given the rides?
The rides.
Yeah.
They said people, if they, people stuck the selfie stick out on a ride, they, all the rides, they, when they do these rides, they, they have people, they're, they're all measured so that, you know, people with really long arms, but selfie sticks exceed that, so they, they disallow selfie sticks. But then the irony of having the risk manager speak at the conference that morning is, I don't know if you saw what happened on the new, uh, that afternoon, there was a big fire in the parking structure.
Yeah.
So, I bet she was busy that afternoon with her risk management. Anyway, thought of that. And then, uh, the other meeting, I didn't put it on my expense report. I don't know if any of us did, but, uh, we had a wonderful luncheon last Monday. Um, Director Uten and I were fortunate to be cornered by a couple of Chargers cheerleaders. I, but why they, well, I do know why they picked you. I mean, they saw some safety over there by you, so. It was, uh, it was, that was a well-received luncheon. I thought, didn't you, Scott? I mean, uh, I'm still not gonna be a Charger fan, but, uh, Mr. Spanos, I thought, did pretty well and, uh.
They sound like they really wanna get involved.
They really do.
In the community. I mean, we'll see.
When, when the mayor gave her little speech, she mentioned two people in the community that she had a lot of respect for, James Ferryman and Mike Schaefer. She mentioned the two of us in her comments.
She was delirious, so.
I think she was totally delirious.
She was delirious before the meeting.
So, okay, uh, let's, there's no old business, so we'll move to new business. Scott?
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
I attended the city council meeting and I went basically to look and see who's the new, new planning commissioners were. And when I walked in, it just had finished with that part of it and all these people were outside really upset with the selection process. I mean, selections of the ones. Then we found out later that Sandy Guinness voted the opposite way that she was supposed to, or there had been two different people, at least one different person, maybe two.
Maybe two, yeah.
That was Teresa Jane. She had sixteen points and the, the person above her had seventeen points, but she had voted the wrong way in terms of, instead of giving her a five for being great, she gave her a one. So, that was the difference. So, you, I'm, you know, if you're in Costa Mesa, you saw it in the paper, but they tried to change it at the last meeting last night, or on Tuesday night, but they, they kept it the same people and.
Well, Sandy came out on Facebook saying, "I screwed up." I mean, she admitted that she had messed up on the cavulation and wanted, uh, the chairman removed and obviously they didn't do it, so. Interesting meeting.
That, that's it.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, new business item number one, Scott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This was actually a request by Secretary Schaefer to place this, uh, item on, on the agenda. Her term, um, as, uh, as a board member of the California Special District, District Association's Board Director is up and so she wants to run for reelection, but in order to do that, she needs board support and that's why this item is on the agenda. She's asking for the board support and, and all the C S D needs is, uh, um, a vote. No resolutions required. We just send them the minutes and.
Have a move the action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to support, uh, our name for reelection, C S D A Board. Do you have the schedule? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Oh, it's right there. I mean, that's good.
Gosh, read your mind.
Item number two?
Move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty seventeen eight nine five. I am up for reelection to the Board of Directors this year for S D R M A. I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Oral Communications Director comments. I have just one comment. I would like to, uh, personally pass my congratulations on to the general manager for the actions last Friday at the California Street Pump Station. We had a power outage during that gale force, whatever that was. We had three pump stations go out.
Yes.
And, um, I was very pleased to see the boys with headlamps on their head, so, uh, they got that thing hooked up and our power was out from like four o'clock in the afternoon till three thirty in the morning, four o'clock in the morning. And those two poor guys were out there in the pouring, uh, it was, it was, it was out there. Brandon and.
It was, uh, it was Tony and, uh, Jesse.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it was Tony and Jesse, yeah. And they did a great job. All my neighbors said, "What was that thing doing out there?" And I said, "Well, did you want your sewer to stop moving?" So, anyway, let, let, let the crew know, appreciate it.
You should have opened up your garage and had coffee and donuts.
Uh, no, it was a little late. I, I did stand out there with my umbrella and, and watch them work.
I got a question. Did we get notified in the proper way that they are all, three of them are out?
You know what's interesting about that, Scott, is I get emails from Edison. I registered for emails, so I get an email, an email saying, "Your power's, your power's out." Really? So, I responded and it was probably two hours later I got a, another email saying, "Your power has been restored." So, I sent them a notification, "No, it hasn't." And about two hours later, I got another notification that the power had been restored. Well, our little corner back there where we live is the only part of Mesa Verde North that's got Underground Utilities. Everybody else was operating except our little corner. So, they must have just assumed we were all together.
If, if this is not planned, our, our, actually our SCAS will notify us before Edison will notify S D R M A.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we know ahead of time.
What time of the day was that for the come on?
Uh, I have it, uh, let's say about three, three thirty. We started, I started getting texts, uh, the Gisler and then President and then California. So, um, you know, we had, we had, uh, Web E O C up, the E O C room, so we're monitoring, um, also other cities and special districts and we were reporting back what, what we were experiencing and, you know, we're monitoring the weather on the pump TV and it was, it was hollering up there. It was, it was coming down pretty good. So, um, that was, that was well and, um, no, it's, uh, they had, the headlamps were, we got them, we appreciated.
Really? That's good. You got them right away then.
I don't know if you remember, but I brought those, the, our power had gone out a couple of weeks before. And it was during the rain and I, was it Tony? I think it was.
That was Jesse again.
It was Jesse again, wasn't it? Yeah. Jesse's out there with a flashlight trying to, and so I held the flashlight. I thought, you know, one of those things on their head would really work and they seemed to like that, so. Good, good, cheap investment. Yes, ma'am.
Tommy was walking around and something today with it on.
Was it?
He's using it all the time.
Was the power out in here or something?
No, he just had it on seven.
Keep an eye on his battery usage, would you? We don't wanna.
Probably a flea caller.
It could be a flea caller. Jeff?
Uh, what, what happened with, uh, remember, and it's, I think it was around the same time or day when the garbage didn't get picked up or it was blowing out in the street.
At Taylor, over on Taylor Street?
Yeah, on Taylor Street.
Uh, from my understanding, it was the father's son's car that blocked the pickup of the, of the trash, of the, of the can. So, the, the, the truck didn't pick up the trash because the car was blocking. It was the older son's car and when he found out about it, it was on tap.
So, it was just that one house?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim and I got texts.
I did too.
From the mayor.
Yeah, Katrina.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
It was on Saturday.
So, is that the only house that was affected?
Sounds like it.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, I thought it was the whole.
That's what she said.
She said the whole, the whole street or something, the cans were rolling down the street.
I saw it when I was getting from the center. I like, you know, you know, one of the things I would wanna renegotiate, you know, is putting GPS in their, in their, in their trucks because, and then we would have access to that GPS and that way, um, if someone calls us, well, like, the truck never came down the street, we pull it up, say, "Yes, it did."
That's a good idea.
It's a real good idea.
It proves either one, they did not put the trash out, or two, maybe there was a car blocking, but at least we can be sure, yeah, they were there.
Is, is that a big expense to put a GPS in?
It might be, but I, I, it's definitely, I think it would be benefit for both agencies, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't pressure you to do that.
Do they have, uh, cameras on the back of those cars?
They do have cameras in the trucks. They do have, yeah, so.
I mean, for the backup, like that one kid got killed over the.
Yes, they do have cameras. That was very expensive, you know, they did have cameras all in the trucks, yes.
Is it appropriate for us?
I don't know, probably. Probably, probably not.
Probably not at this point. Okay, then, uh, there are no other oral communications. I am going to adjourn us to a closed session regarding public employee performance evaluation, government code five four nine five seven for the general manager. Okay? And report that we've done the evaluation of the performance of the general manager. Uh, it was a positive, um, evaluation and again, very, very pleased to have Scott Carroll as our general manager. Okay, anything else for the board?
I mean, and then you're going to meet with Scott.
Oh, and I'll meet, when I get back from vacation, you and I'll sit down and, you know, reaffirm what, what we, what we did. Okay.
Move adjournment.
You don't need to move it. I'm gonna adjourn it.
Bob wants to get ahead of here.
Must be going to.
Bob's got a gig.